Board meeting number five, Thursday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. That's yours. It was by me.
Oh, that's okay. You can have it. You may need to hit Nancy before I need to hit you. How about that?
No, I can bounce this off you and it can go right to you.
Okay. All right, well, it's starting to warm up. Look at all the smiling faces up there. Hi, Audrey. Look at Patrick O'Shaughnessy, our Irishman from the road, from the county engineers. All right, we'll open the meeting with public comments. If anyone has a public comment, ask them to speak for three minutes. Give us your name and address.
I am Nemeth, Morris Nemeth, three-two-nine South Hubbard Road, Louisville, Ohio, Coatesville Township. And I'm, as you remember, I'm a longstanding member of McGuffey Historical Homesites Society in the nineteen-seventies, and I also represent Coatesville Community. I'm here today to encourage the partnership of ODNR with a resolution to partner with Milkwood Metro Parks so that we can have more resources for our natural environment and also to educate the public so that it will continue into the future. We already know about the deterioration and it's been verified of the property. So that is my hope for the resolution letter today.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. I'm Richard Scarsala, six-seven-four-four, Applewood Circle Boardman. I'm the chairman of the board of the William Holmes McGuffey Historical Society, and we appreciate the time and effort the commissioner's offices put into our proposed resolution, which is urging the Milkwood Metro Parks Board of Commissioners to transfer ownership of the McGuffey Wildlife Reserve, McGuffey Road, Coatesville Township, Ohio, to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources or to co-manage the reserve with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources as a state nature preserve. As you know, all county residents pay a county park levy, and the citizens of Coatesville Camel and the Hones County side have not been getting a fully maintained first-class facility at the McGuffey Wildlife Reserve, as evidenced by the deterioration and the disappearance of the pond and the removal of the dock. We believe having an enhanced ODNR presence in the valley would create tourism in the northeast part of the county, boost the economy, add prestige to the valley, and bring ODNR dollars to the valley. We feel that this is a win-win situation. Milkwood Metro Parks would be rid of a facility that they do not want to maintain, a facility that my society gave them twenty-five years ago, seventy-three acres, National Spur Landmark. It is also a win-win situation for the valley because now ODNR would assume the cost of the maintenance and have to be relieved from the county taxes. And I do plan on coming to your staff meeting.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. We approve the previous minutes of board meeting number four, Thursday, February second, two thousand and twenty-three, and approve those for payment. Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Advertisements for bids. Santay.
Morning, everybody. Number one is to advertise for the Camel Wastewater Treatment Plant Blowers and Diffusers Replacement Project. It's improvement number five thirty-five.
Okay, a motion to approve advertisement for bids.
Motion approved advertisement for bids, number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion approved journal entry, number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Travels. Auditors. Okay, auditors, commissioners. Attend to two thousand and twenty-three Tyler Connect Conference in San Antonio, Texas.
Yeah, that's the annual conference, more of the technical side of the system and all the programs and stuff, and so my office and the auditor's office will be attending.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. A motion approved travels.
Motion approved travels, two A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
And purchasing, I provide.
Are you taking Jim?
Megan.
Jim won't go with me.
Megan. Jim, I think that you would fit right in in the Texas environment.
I'll think about it.
Put your cowboy boots on, your cowboy hat.
Away you go.
You look like you could have been in one of those cowboy movies with Clint Eastwood from the Hang 'Em High or something, you know?
I like him.
You know who he reminds me of? If you get him a black hat and put a holster on him, Lee Van Cleef.
Lee Van Cleef. I know the name, but I can't picture the face. I'm sure if I saw-
Good, the bad, the ugly.
Good, the bad, yeah, oh, he was a mean guy. He was a mean guy.
What a hell, when he got the face.
I'm the good.
I know.
Till you get you mad.
Okay, move on to agreements. Engineers, Pat.
Commissioners, letter A is modification number two with MS Consultants for the engineering services for the Western Reserve Road Widening Project, the amount of thirty thousand dollars, non-general funds. The project originally was two separate contracts. Due to the delays with the railroad and the sanitary sewer project, we combined the road widening into one large project that'll be built in phases. So this is covering the additional engineering for that.
Thanks, Pat. Facilities, Jim, you want to do that?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement for monthly cleaning of the septic tanks and quarterly swinging of grease traps at the Justice Center in the amount of ten thousand four hundred dollars. It's general fund and it's through Charlie Hoffman Justice Center.
Okay, lead-based.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here today. Agreement with C is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Work at five fifty-one East Boston, the amount of twenty thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars, non-general. D is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Work at nine oh four Oxford, thirty thousand twenty-five dollars, non-general, and also conjunction with the city of Youngstown, C B G.
Okay, thanks. Sanitary, Pat.
Commissioners, letter E is modification number one with Hoff Consulting. This is for the additional services for the Ellsworth State Route forty-five Sanitary Sewer Extension. This is improvement number five forty-one in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars. I'm sorry, twenty-one thousand one hundred. These are also non-general funds.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Motion approved agreements.
Motion approved agreements, A through E.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Change orders, engineers.
Commissioners, letter A is change order number one with the Shook Company. This is for the Leffingwell Road Bridge Replacement in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, twenty cents, and these are non-general funds.
Lead-based.
Letter B is a change order with American Pinnacle Construction for additional chip, Homewood Fairway at forty-eight Elm Street, the amount of eight hundred eighty dollars, non-general. And C is a change order number two with American Pinnacle Construction for the chip Homewood Fairway Taylor, a decrease amount of one thousand.
Okay, thank you. Motion approved change orders.
Motion approved change orders, A through C.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Road closings, Pat.
Commissioners, letter A is the continuation of the Western Reserve Road Sewer Project. The next closure is going to fall between Southern Boulevard and South Avenue, beginning February fourteenth until April twenty-eighth. The whole section's not going to be closed at the same time. It's going to be broken into three segments. Phase one is Southern Boulevard to Indian Creek, and that's going to be from February fourteenth to March third. Phase two is Indian Creek to Crossroads, March sixth to March twenty-fourth. Phase three will be between Crossroads and South Avenue, between March twenty-seventh and April twenty-eighth. During all of these closures, all local traffic will be permitted in and out of their residence businesses. And at five thirty PM, the entire road will be opened back up, either two lanes or one lane controlled with signals.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Motion approved road closings.
Motion approved road closings, five A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay, appointments, commissioners. Point the following individuals to serve on the Mahoney County Tax Incentive Review Council: James Fortunato, David Klasick, and Scott Satterly. Have a motion.
Motion approved appointments, six A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Record of bids, engineers.
Commissioners, letter A is the two thousand and twenty-two OPWC Road and Safety Upgrade Program and the two thousand and twenty-three Sales Tax Resurfacing Program.
Okay, Pat, thank you. Motion approved record of bids.
Motion approved record of bids, two A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolution of awards, sanitary.
Commissioners, letter A is order of the polymer for the Mahoney County Metropolitan Sewer District wastewater treatment plants at the following locations, from January first, two thousand and twenty-three, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Non-general funds and low bids. We have Polidine that's going to be at the Boardman Wastewater Plant for forty-one thousand, estimated per year. Meander at eighty-nine thousand dollars, estimated per year. Craig Beach at five thousand per year. And Tidewater Products at Camel and New Middletown Wastewater Plants at eight thousand each per year.
All right, thank you, Pat. Motion approved resolution of awards.
Motion approved resolution of awards, three A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions, Commissioners, O M B, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, P.
No, I'll just, no, I'll just see these first ones. And then I'll have Susan's on there, too. The first one is a resolution approving Memorial Day allowance for two hundred and fifty dollars to veterans organizations and a hundred thousand to civic groups per Ohio Rice Code three oh seven point six-six. And I know Susan's on it. I didn't know if she wanted to say anything with that.
Good morning, commissioners and Audrey. This is a annual allowance that we reimburse back to the service organizations for their Memorial Day allowances. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Item B.
Okay. Item B is a resolution to amend resolution thirteen oh three oh one four for the appointment of sanitary engineer. This is just to bring that position in line with what we're doing with our other administrative positions. Item C, item C is a resolution approving an addendum to the operating and maintenance agreement with Youngstown Central Area Community Improvement Corporation. We're just extending all the terms with no changes until June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three, as we work on the new agreement. Item D is a resolution amending the municipal lease finance agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc., and subsequently assigned to Sando Leasing, LAC, to replace with Schedule B. And that is just since we had some of the agencies pay ahead of time and forego the interest cost, they had to redo the schedule for us. So it's just redoing the schedule, so it's at actually a lower amount on the interest side. And item E is a resolution fixing the time, place, view, final hearing, and notice thereof, a proposed petition to vacate an unnamed street part of great lot number nine in Poland Township.
All right, thank you. F, facilities, Jim, you want to?
Yes. This is a resolution approving appointment of one custodian for the park.
Thanks, Jim. G, lead-based.
Okay. These are moral obligation payments for chip grant properties. It's coming to a close. As you know, the chip rehab program, especially in here, incorporates, we have to do lead inspection, risk assessment. We have to address lead-based paint. Some of that comes from, since on one seventy-two Marion, we put almost twenty-four thousand dollars in lead hazard control funds into that project. There was a child under the age of six. All the other parameters are pretty much the same for the clients that apply for these grants. Normally, our change orders are reflective of what was in the change order section on the board today. But occasionally, you have some more expensive things that come about, some unforeseen things. Two thirteen Tremble, for example, they had to cut the basement floor and replace the sanitary line. Was more than half of that change order that took us over ten percent of the contract cost. The two sixteen Elm for American Pinnacle for seventy-five fifty, all the roof sheathing had to be replaced at that particular project. Some unforeseen things there. Seven sixty Coatesville Road, WW Construction, for eight thousand three hundred thirty-five, had the decorative eve brackets along the roof line. Were very expensive to do lead-based paint on there. Four twenty-one East Ohio Avenue at twenty-two hundred. I didn't review that, that change order, but I know it did throw us over, over ten percent for that moral obligation. That was a repair job that was quite small, less than twenty thousand. One twenty-two Creed Street, I believe, that final change order, we required a pod to take some of the things out so that we could get a lead-based paint clearance because the contents of that home were in great quantities. So we put things in a pod, and that took us over ten percent. And then one seventy-two Marion, one of the largest jobs we've done, I know there was almost thirty thousand, like I said, twenty-four thousand dollars in lead hazard control work done there, fifty-seven thousand dollars in rehab. It was just a huge job at a, at a, an old home. The home was built in nineteen thirty. Most of our houses are built between nineteen hundred and I think the newest one was nineteen fifty-two. So they're very, very old homes. We actually took the mayor of Struthers and their whole team down to one seventy-two Marion to walk that property at clearance time. But those are some add-on items. The back porch was deteriorated underneath, unforeseen to us until the last was removed. So that caused the port to droop, which caused us to have to reinstall the windows again because they went out of plum and plaster and things like that. But it came down to a great project down there for a child under the age of six as well. So it kind of covered two programs. But I know, I know it was a cumbersome amount of moral obligations there. But we're working on steps to alleviate that many. The state wants to see our change orders aligned by the date that they happen. And in an effort to comply with what the state wanted and due to change orders, we ended up with five different change orders. So we're going to try and fix the steps to, how many, how many change orders there are. But they're, for the most part, they're unforeseen. I know there was a calculation error on one seventy-two Marion for some of the siding that was then forwarded to the contractors. That's the basis of these moral obligations.
Phil, I know these are federal grants, and you're partnering with Youngstown in some of them.
But these are all chip grants, so this is all money from the state. So these are Camel, Struthers, and Mahoney County Partnership outside the city of Youngstown for all of these. And for the most part, our lead projects are more in line with what you saw in the change order portion of that. These unfortunately were, there was one, two, three, four big items that drove us over that ten percent, and then, and it was a trickle-down for Marion. Once we were over the ten percent, we sent the rest of them down as morals as well. But they're, they're normally, you know, eight hundred to a thousand bucks. If you, if you look at the entirety, I think our repair program was, was less than two percent change orders. If you take away the two big, big change orders, we're under seven percent for the repair or the rehab program. And you're talking about, we spent almost six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars on rehabs, nine rehabs in this last previous chip grant. So it's just unforeseen, unforeseen items.
It always makes me step back and pause and think, you know, how much further ahead we'd be if we built, you know, homes in the vacant. I know the whole intent of the programs like this are to keep people in their neighborhoods and to try to revitalize neighborhoods and not just demolish homes. But it seems like we have so many vacant lots that there's in neighborhoods that there should be opportunity to build new construction that eliminates the need for all these. And, and I don't know. Sometimes I look at the federal government, state government, and stuff they won't fund and the things they do fund. It just makes you, gives you pause. And, you know, and I, and I know that you're following the, the rules and regulations on everything you're doing here. But just for our own satisfaction and the three of us to better understand everything, I'd like to pull G off of the agenda right now and just, you know, go through the projects and let, let us know which ones are over the ten percent, where we're at, and what we need to do. And I know a lot of this is timing on when the invoices came in and, you know, a lot of the things that restrict us from doing things with invoices and stuff. So there's probably a lot of moving parts in all this. And just so that Carol and Anthony and myself can better understand it, I'd like to pull G off of the agenda and move on to H. And then we'll just set up a time where we'll sit down for, you know, some timeframe.
Yeah, there is some timeframe. I know his, his, his performance period is the end of this month, so we would have to turn around really fast because he does-
Do we have any time today at the end of the meeting? At the end of the staff meetings?
We don't have it on our schedule, but I mean, we can amend our schedule.
I mean, if there's a, I mean, this is an emergency.
You're taking it from here, you're taking it from there. Huh?
How much time? I mean, do you have information?
I can gather information myself.
Yeah. Yeah, you can maybe sit with Commissioner Ditzler as president of the board, and then that way he can just refund back to the other ones. Yeah, we'll get done before then, before our staff meeting starts at eleven, so you can just come over and talk with him, okay?
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, move on to H, prosecutors.
Morning, commissioners.
Well, our favorite prosecuting attorney is here.
Yep.
He's disgusting.
So.
So we are, we actually had a couple of vehicles that we, that we retired because we basically used to drive them till they fall apart.
A lot of things retired in that department.
Yeah. So, so we, we did not, so we are going to replace, we are asking to replace a vehicle. Obviously, this amount is within our current budget. And we, we also have a, have followed all the policies of the purchasing program. We actually did look at state purchasing originally, but it's so expensive and it takes so much time that it's way more cost-effective to go to local companies, look for a used vehicle, and try to get one. We usually look for one that had the warranties and, and everything that would meet our needs. You know, as you know, part of the job is with our investigators is that they go out and they have to do investigations partially. They have to serve witnesses, and they also have to, you know, transport victims. In addition to that, our office is doing a lot more community engagement. As you can see, we were listening to the public, and that's what they want us to do, and we're out there. And as a result of that, we're having to transport items. And I really just don't like people using their personal vehicles to that, so it would be very helpful to have a vehicle that we can back up with our investigators because we did lose a vehicle that was, you know, that serviced, and also to be available to help serve the community when we're engaged out there with all the different community events. So that's what we're looking for, and we would appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it on that. Sanitary, Pat.
Commissioners, letter I is a resolution approving the termination of one Treatment Plan A effective February first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. A motion to approve resolutions A through, A through F excluding G and H and I, as per the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay. For the good of the order, before I do that, you know, I wanted to just say that this is what, February the ninth?
Yes.
February the ninth, and February is Black History Month. I know that, I think that we tend to overlook a lot of things today on how we educate our children and how we, how we move forward with respect to losing our history, losing our heritage, and the, the whole, the whole thing that brought us to where we are today. We don't, we don't teach African-American history as much as we should. We don't teach Ohio history like we used to. We don't teach American history, you know, and, and the, what's the most popular saying? If we don't remember the past, we're, we're doomed to re, to repeat it. So I made it a point to, to kind of look and try to identify, why, why is February Black History Month? You know, and, and really, the, the intent there was derived by a lot of different things. The NAACP was started in February, I believe it was nineteen oh nine. Nineteen fifteen, in February, they, they marked the fiftieth anniversary of the Thirteenth Amendment to abolish slavery. And we took in, we honored in February two people that had that movement at, at the, at the core of their being, really. Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass were both born in February, both of whom, you know, Abraham Lincoln, a big advocate to abolish slavery, and also Frederick Douglass, who was a very big advocate in the abolitionist movement during the Civil War and went on to, you know, to help many, many, many people throughout his writings, his readings, his talks over the years. So we really do it in February to honor all of the African-Americans that have given so much and contributed so much to where we are today and who we are today. And, you know, nineteen seventy-six, Gerald Ford, President Ford, is really the one that initiated the February being the Black History Month that we, that we acknowledge today. So there's so many different things, and, you know, it's, it's always good to, to revisit where, why we're at where we are. And it made me feel better reading a lot of the different things because it refreshed my memory. Because I know that we, we all, you know, at our age, you know, I know, I won't say, at my age, I know that I learned a lot of history in school. And at my age, I learned a hot lot of history because I don't want to lump everybody into my age because Anthony's a young man. But, but anyway. And the other thing, too, is, you know, I'll tell you, when we had the opportunity Saturday morning to do the ribbon cutting at a senior center for Audrey Tillis's sister, Bodie, what we call her Bodie, her name's Linda Hall. And she had a minister, Timson, I believe it was, that spoke. And, and he is, his granddaughter was one of seven young ladies that authored a book called Brown Girl Guidebook. And, and it really, you know, kind of gives you a little overview of, you know, who we are and where we are and what we are, you know? And, and maybe, maybe you can add to that. I don't know if you read the book yet.
I haven't read the book. And, no, she introduced it to everybody there and had, there was two books that she introduced and, and put it out there. It is available on Amazon. I believe- I believe the young lady, is she from this area?
I was going to ask, is she from here? I think she is.
Yeah, there were seven young ladies and I don't remember if one or all that were from different areas, but it was, it was definitely one that had a connection to us locally through the, to the minister, Timson. But, yeah, so I, I don't know. Can you add anything to what I'm saying just from, you know, not to pinpoint you, Audrey?
Yes, you get me. No, it, it is, just to see, I'm, I'm appreciative of all the things that Mental Health and Recovery Board is doing right now. They have the, they have like a spotlight on different innovators and people in the mental health industry. And I think we actually have some of that on our website and on their Facebook page. So that you can see some of those things. I know that Gelada, she's been posting a new care, new person every, I don't know if she's doing it every week, another person who has made an influence, not only to African-Americans but to the community as a whole, you know? Because that's just it, we are all inventors and, and America has always been that melting pot of a lot of individuals. And we all bring something different to the table that may be diverse, but it, it works for all of us and it works for the whole. And that's so important that we all appreciate each other and what we bring, you know? Whether it's, it's, it's through our ethnicity or through our education, our experiences, our backgrounds, whether you're, you know, higher in society or lower in society. You all have something to bring to the table and we have to recognize that and, and value individuals. And I think that we don't seem to, to do that as much as we should do today.
I, I couldn't agree more with you, Audrey. Because you know, the, the, it's, it's sad because you've almost gotten to a point today where we're naming different crimes that people commit as hate crimes. And because they go after an ethnicity, a race, a religion, and they attack people that they know nothing about. And to get to that point just shows that we have not taken and made it a focal point in our education system to make it, to make sure that, that we know where we're all from and where we came from and, and what value we add. And, you know, it's, it's, when you say a melting pot, how true. And I, I, I say, I've said this a lot of times, but I reference, you know, my, my working at age eighteen, the Youngstown Sheet and Tube in the mill. You know, I went in the Youngstown Sheet and Tube. I mean, there was, there was all the different groups that hung together and interacted. There was, you know, the, the Plug Gang, the Labor Gang, the, you know, the High Mill. And, you know, there was groups where people that spoke Spanish went into a certain department, African-Americans, Italians, and, and everybody meshed. And it was, it really, you know, kind of reiterated my schooling and upbringing that, that there was such a melting pot and, you know, and it really made you look at each other as all just people that worked at Youngstown Sheet and Tube. We didn't look at colors, races, religion, because everybody's part, part in the work, you know, was life or death to the other person. You know, when we make such a big deal of, you know, football players, you know, having knee injuries for life, that's why they make millions of dollars. You know, well, I can tell you, my dad had knee injuries for life from spot welding for forty-seven years and pumping a foot pedal and never made more than sixteen thousand dollars in his life, you know, in a year. And how many people out there work, you know, day and night and risk their lives are police officers and things that happened that, you know? I mean, I, I, in my tenure at Youngstown Sheet and Tube, three people were killed while I worked there. You know, I don't remember many, you know, professional athletes killed, you know, that make millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars. So we, you know, we, we look at things, you know, with the, I look at things with a John Deci today on how we reward people that work so hard in our society. But anyway, another place and time. Thank you, Audrey. Anthony, anything you'd like to add?
No, I'd just like to add to what Dave said, you know, recognize in February is Black History Month. You know, I studied in college, my sociology class, Frederick Douglass, was actually one of the people that we studied. And, you know, he was part of the abolitionist movement. And one of the things that he said was, without struggle, there can be no progress. So one of the things I see in this community, what makes us so strong, and I believe it unites us, is our culture. You can go downtown, we have many different festivals throughout our community. And I believe our culture here is truly what makes us strong because you can taste every ethnic food, you can celebrate every ethnic events that they have. We can go do that. And that's what, to me, I feel makes America strong because I just don't want to eat meat and potatoes. So thank God for another culture. We have all these other foods, all these other movies, and don't forget music. That's another thing that, that unites us all. But on another note, I mean, we've had some travities, travesties that's happened in the last week. We had a spy balloon, then we had an earthquake, and now we have a Trill train derailment in East Palestine. And I just briefly want to thank our EMA, our first responders, our hazmat team. I want to thank Andy Frost, our chief of our EMA, Robin Lees. They were all on the phone, they were all accessible. Chief Sakeley did a yeoman's job from our hazmat team, giving us updates on what was happening with that brutal, brutal derailment down there. And, and I was told by some of the firefighters and, and Chief Sakeley, it was like being in hell. And it was so hot that you couldn't even get near it. It would melt your face mask off of your, off of your suit. So if you imagine what those firefighters did and the first responders did to go down there, because that was right in the heart of East Palestine's community. Those people were evacuated. And I was told that they called a fireman all the way from West Virginia, from Pennsylvania, Trumbull County, Mahoney County and Plumby Anna. So you know what? When you talk about emergency management and why we need them now, there is a prime example of why we need these safety services here in our community. And again, I just want to thank everybody for what they did in putting their lives basically at risk. I want to thank Governor DeWine. He made, I believe, two appearances or one, I'm not, I'm not sure, two appearances down there. And I understood that the US EPA has been down there and the state EPA. So however that's going to play out, it was very serious. And I guess they're continuing to monitor the air. So again, hats off to our safety services and first responders. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. And Anthony is the representative for the board on the EMA board. And, or hazmat, I'm sorry. And, and he is, he was in direct contact a lot with respect to Chief Sakeley and EMA.
Well, I, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I think they summed it up perfectly. We need to pay attention on who we are. And we need to also look at who other people are and respect who they are and learn everyone's, everyone's character, their abilities, who they really are in, in life. And I think, and I have to say this, I think we need, it has to happen in the schools. When we grew up, or I could say when I grew up in the fifties and the sixties, we were taught a lot of things in our school, history, mathematics, everything. Today, it's a whole different, a whole different thing. We have too much of this going on. And I'm going to put it up because we're all using them. Too much of this, too much of this on the phone or who's going to get on the phone and do the Facebook and tape and do all this happy crap that's the new deal now. We need to get, our parents for our young children today have to monitor the computers and the phones. And the reason you might say this has no relevance to what they're talking about, it really does. Because what they should be doing is having intervention with their families or whoever their guardians are. You don't have to have a whole group in your home, but you have somebody that oversight or has oversight to your, your kids. Let them sit down and tell you what happened today at school. Let them tell you, well, hey, we learned this today. We learned that there is Black History Month. We learned that there is the festivals downtown. Why is that? Well, how did we get here? And have somebody explain that to them in their home. You don't need to be a mental giant to do that. These are just common sense things we need to teach our children, common sense. If we could do that, look at your children. It's not a sin to have an issue. What we're building today is all of this stuff that Dave and Anthony mentioned about guns and violence and that. Everybody's, they feel the entitlement to get a gun and go shoot. Do you really think that they're normal? That's mental illness. We've lost what we need to look at with our children. We need, we can't do anything with those that are already out there. But we could build on our children. And I say this, I know there's no media here or anything, but I say this, well, I'm sorry. What I'm saying is about our school, you know what I mean? But this is on our site. Our parents, our guardians and whoever's in charge of our children need to get them off of the phone, off of the computer, at least for a couple hours a day. Find out what they're doing in school. Sit down and have a cup of hot cocoa or something. Inter, have an intervention with them. And our schools, like Dave and Anthony says, needs to start teaching our children what's really going on in this country. When they have a bad event happen, to go into the classroom and to those that understand this and say, what's your take on this? How do you feel in your heart about what's happening to our people? That's how you find out what children think today. You can't know what they think if you don't ask them. So I could get on a soapbox, but you shouldn't ask me. So that's what I have to say. Have a beautiful weekend, enjoy yourself and stay safe.
Yeah, it's getting a little warmer. So I don't know, I, I think we're going to be in a false sense of security when the next ten-inch snow hits. You know, and we think we're, we think we're out of it. But yeah, thank you, Anthony, with the update on, on that, the train derailment. You know, it's not too often that you turn the national news on and see them going right to there on, you know, David Muir, you know, on, on the national news. When it, when it opens the national news with the overhead view of all the railroad cars that are, you know, look like pickup sticks that you threw up in the air with the game we used to play when we were little. And the, the thing, a lot of people don't have the ability to interact with trains anymore because there's not a whole lot of train movement today as there used to be. But, I mean, I hearken back to the last two years I was at Youngstown Sheet and Tube when all the departments were shut down except one, the Seamless Hot Mill. And I was in charge of the demurrage on the railroad that was charged to Youngstown Sheet and Tube. And that's when you leave railroad cars on the tracks too long, the owners of the cars, the P and L Lee, Pittsburgh, different railroad companies, charge you a fee for the, for you not unloading and moving the cars out of your control quicker. So my job was to eliminate demurrage on the railroads. And I worked with the Mahoning Valley Railroad. Dan Santilli was the, the roadmaster, the yardmaster of the MV Railroad. And I was, it's probably why my back's like it is today. I had to jump in and out of railroad cars constantly, you know, I, inventorying the steel that was in the railroad cars to see where it was needed, when it was needed, and bring it to get unloaded in a timely manner that didn't accumulate, you know, demurrage all through it. So anyway, that was, but when you walked on those railroad tracks and you saw, I mean, there was literally areas that had twenty crossings of tracks in a spot where the, the railroad crew would be out, you know, flipping switches by hand, you know, to, to move this car on this track, this car on this track, you know? And that's why, you know, when I, when I go like into war and I'm crossing tracks, you know, a lot of them don't have the gates to go up and down, you know? And when I was in my twenties working at Thomas Steel, I used to like race across the track because I didn't want to get stuck behind a car. Well, now that I'm old and I'm smarter, I think, you know, I stop and I look, you know? And I, I don't do the things I did. But there, you know, there's a lot of things that can happen on railroad tracks that people take for granted and don't do what they should do, you know? And thank God, we have a lot of people that, you know, reacted and, you know, corrected. And, you know, I don't know how it's going to shake down on what, you know, happened there to create this problem, you know?
That's what I wanted to address. What can we do in the future as EPA looking at what we can do to prevent this? I know they've got the car going already.
Yeah, I'm sure that there's, there's, there's going to be a report made and corrections made if there was an error made, you know? You know, it's, it's just like, you know, anything else that, you know, it, it takes a catastrophe to correct oversight, you know? But fortunately, in this catastrophe, no one was impacted with their life, you know? And hopefully, long range, no one's impacted as well too. But that's.
I forgot to mention, Stan Boney did a wonderful job covering that, that accident. So kudos to Stan Boney and his crew and the station for all they did.
That was scary.
Yeah. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Wiegand?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzer?
Yes.